All right, why don't we get started? We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can we already do that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And I'd like to start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, I will move to any amendments to the agenda, David.
No amendments.
All right. And we'd like to take an opportunity, we have one of our student representatives who will be moving off of the board, and we'd like to take a moment and recognize Neerja Patel's contributions as a student representative to the school board.
So come on up, Neerja. We gotta, we gotta recognize her. Come on up. So I want to just read a little bit on behalf of the board. So Neerja Patel, you were elected by your peers to represent them on the board, school directors. Your active participation and positive contributions during the past two years are evidence that trust was well-placed. Your leadership and service qualities such as yours, your assets are valued and will be a great asset in your life ahead. We thank you for sharing your time with us. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So anything you want to share with us? This is your, you get a little bit of an opportunity.
Um.
Kind of work into your announcement.
Uh, next year I will be attending George Washington University in DC. And I'm attending the Columbia and College of Arts and Sciences, currently undecided, but we'll figure that out. And, yeah. I don't know what else to say.
So your experience a little bit here?
Oh, um, yeah, it's been an awesome experience. I loved hearing all the thoughts and ideas of the school board, and I loved just giving our input of those things that were presented at the school board, and of all the things that we presented to you guys, and keeping you updated, which was really awesome because someone gets to listen to what we've been saying and what we've been doing. So it's been a really great opportunity.
Right.
Well, we want to continue to look at your successor and say that we want the feedback, so we'll hopefully see and hear a lot from you next year as well. And congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to announcements from our student representatives.
They don't have the announcements?
They should be. Here you go. You have a lot of it's your stuff, so you'd rather be able to say it right now, probably. You don't have to go through all of them, you can hit some of the high points the board has it, but maybe some of the things that the audience would like.
Okay. Um, so there are a bunch of Chamberlain events that are coming up. There will be the Carnation Assembly and Field Day, 5th Grade Celebration, which is at 7:00 PM, and Last Day of School, which is a half-day. And those are all listed and their dates. All schools have their last day of school on June 12th, and testing is happening next week. And high schoolers don't have school on Friday because of studying. Uh, yeah, so graduation, which will be featuring our Wendy Neerja, will be next Friday, June 12th, at 10 o'clock at St. Michael's, St. Michael's College in the Brock Center, and it'll be around an hour and a half. Also, big picture students from the high school will be featured on two new segments, which is really exciting, one which may go national. Something really awesome, there's a senior who presented, who actually played at our senior banquet, was really awesome. Her name is Patricia Bristow Johnson, and she will, she was on VPR Classical today at 8:30 AM. So it's really awesome to see one of my classmates being able to do that. So congratulations to her.
There's more air times too, right? And you can also go online and listen to it.
Yeah, you can also go online. And today, 8:30 AM, Friday at 4:00, and Saturday at 9:00 AM, if you want to hear her. She creates her own music, and she's really awesome.
No, and I think the last part really is just for the board, the V-Hi options, actually, I think one of you forwarded them to me as well, so this was kind of a double. But if you are interested in doing, going to one of those sessions, you know, just let us know. We can make sure everybody's being communicated with on who's wanting to go. Thank you.
And we just want to talk about a little bit of South Burlington. So we had our academic, we're having our Academic Awards Night tomorrow, so that will be really awesome, and seeing all the great students that have come and done great things at our school. Exams have finally finished, the, well, not school exams, but, you know, outside exams like S-Packs and stuff, so students are studying for those. Also, this past week, the middle school had Tuttle Fest, and it was like a day to clean up the campus and like do really great things. I know they've built two paths from the junior lot to the like main campus, which I know a lot of students already appreciate. So that was really cool, and I think it was their first time doing it, and it went really well. Also, this past Thursday, we've had CDC Appreciation Day. For all of you that don't know, that's the Center of Career Development Center, and it's where everyone logs their hours for community service. And so they have an annual appreciation day, which is just a really fun event, and they recognize all the people that have done community service in the school. Also, there has been a lot of sports things that have been going on, so our tennis semifinals happened today, and then track finals this Saturday, and Ultimate, Ultimate Frisbee States was last Saturday. And also, our last senior banquet was on Monday, so that was really fun and nice to see everyone for almost the last time. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Again, a lot of, a lot of great things going on, too many for less in many ways, but one that was also on there that I thought was really, big picture program did a, you know, some engineering work for concrete, I think, of concrete structures to help for, you know, individuals that are going through, you know, tornadoes, and that's getting some attention as well. So that was, again, exciting to see some of the learning applied. So again, thank you for the announcements.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, Consider the Hire of the Rick Markott Central School Principal.
Yes. So this is also, I know the board's come through a process just recently recognizing the master planning and visioning process, but so too has been the administrative process to hire a new administrator. You have a packet in front of you, and I know that you didn't get this in, you didn't get it real early, and I apologize for that. There was some things that, you know, I needed to do in my kind of final work. Tonight, I am recommending Brent Coon for the position. Brent is currently a principal in Swanton, just north of St. Albans. And I will tell you that this process has been one that has involved all of the staff, all of the staff that desired to be part of. Again, we had a large group that started out with a search committee looking at the applicants, an interview committee, a site committee, a forum committee, again, that we look to have involvement from all. The administrators were also part of the process, and each provided feedback on all of the candidates that were interviewed. I'm excited about the opportunity to welcome Brent here. He wanted to be here, but he said, "I would, I'll cancel my attending students to Norwich, Vermont." He's got a, where he's accompanying students for a celebration, and I said, "No, I think that the board would understand that." I would certainly like to, at some point, bring him back where you could meet him, but we will, we are hoping that you'll approve that request and also allow me the opportunity to connect him into some of the professional learning that's going to happen with our, with our administrators late June and before the start of next year. So let me just pause, the board may have some questions for me.
Do we have specifics on?
Can you give us an idea of who participated in the selection committee?
Well, there's, there's many. It is in the packet, Dan, but as I said, we had the search committee, search committee that was made up of all staff. I started out the process, just to be clear about really making sure that they were aware of, number one, with the retirement of Sulak, and it was going to be an elaborate involved process. Karen Dantcher worked extensively with me to outline and evaluate the job description, look at what are the wants and needs for the school, and then put forth that work into the committees. So the screening committee, which looked at the applicants, the interview committee that designed the questions, the administrative team that also interviewed the candidates. We had a community forum, which allowed the community also to weigh in, and, you know, again, I feel like the process was, was well-done. Julie also, I thanked Julie for participating. I know it was a time, it was a time crunch, but she made that work. Each of the, each of the groups essentially provided a scoring rubric for me that then got passed on, and again, that was, in fairness to Karen and her, and her work, provided me with administrative feedback, parent feedback, et cetera, which I then went through and reviewed. So.
David, can you give us an idea how many, if you will, finalists were involved in that?
The, the committee referred two to me.
Two?
Two to me. And in part, one of the candidates had, had a family-related sad event happen, which kind of postponed my, my ability to kind of do the connections. So two finalists, and then I took it from there and then set up separate interviews with them and follow-up conversations, et cetera. So again, I was happy, both, both candidates I thought were, were excellent. But I'm happy to be recommending to you Brent Coon.
And do we have any specific recommendations on compensation?
That should have been, it's not in that packet. It falls within, within the guidelines of the administrative contract, at step five. And step five, I'm going to say is 113. Can I just look at that? Yeah, it's, it's in the 113. Actually, I can get it if you want to just hold on that.
Well, I think I have a.
Yeah, perfect. Step five. It's probably, don't have, next year is, I don't know.
No, I don't.
So I can get it. I can, I can get that information. They should have had it on in that packet for you.
And obvious, within budget then?
Yes.
Any further board questions? Do I have a motion to accept the administration's recommendation to hire Brent Coon?
Brent Coon.
I'm sorry, working at the letter, as the new principal of Rick Markott Central School?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes? And I'd like to welcome Mr. Coon to the South Burlington School District and look forward to meeting him.
Thank you, board.
Dave, did you have something to add?
After this is done, I want to make a change in the agenda for some people that are here. Sorry, I'll let you finish that, though.
No, sorry, no problem.
I was popping my hand up.
Julie was very attentive to your body language. Thank you. Yes, would you like to modify that, Nan?
Can we start, start with the superintendent's report, the mentoring assessment update? There are people here that, it's young people, actually, that need to move on, so.
Okay. All right, we'll shift to Agenda Item 8, and we'll move to the superintendent's report.
So why don't we start and welcome Susie, Mayor? Susie's got a little presentation, so welcome Susie. Always happy to have you here.
And I'm going to introduce one of our wonderful mentors, Alganish Mikhail, who will be our host.
I'm going to go over here for Susie.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I'm standing behind you.
Oh, I'll get out of your way, too.
My name is, well, thank you, first of all, thank you for hosting, for hosting us tonight. My name is Alganish Mikhail. I am a mentor here at the SB Mentoring. I have a, a young leader who is in 6th grade this year, who have been together since she was 3rd grade. So this is our end of 4th year. And she couldn't be here today, but she's very incredible young leader. She loves the, the program so much, she recruited one of her friends to the program. So her friend is joining, joined us this year, so they just finished, I believe, this is their, the end of their first year. This is her friend. I, I want to take a little bit of time, if I may, to go back to, to my name. Alganish, Alganish, my name is Alganish, and I wanted to say a little bit about the origin. My name is, it is from a small country in northeast part of Africa, a country called Eritrea, and it's very common name back home, as, as common as Anna, Lisa, Michelle in the United States. But it's so foreign here, people sometimes are afraid to pronounce the name. So if I can take like a minute or two to share a story. Here I am checking in at a hotel once, some time ago, and this young man came to help me, and he asked, and he said, "May I help you?" And I said, "I have a reservation tonight," and I gave him my name. And so, so to make his life a little easy, I gave him an ID card, so he can see the way my name is spelt. I'm a little nervous, but bear with me. And so, and so he put the name in his, in the computer, and he said, "Ma'am, are you sure you're in the right place?" And I said, "Yes, I made this reservation a couple of weeks ago, so I, I am sure this is the right place." So he said, "Okay, let me put it again." So he put the name again, he still can't find it. And at this ti, at this point, he's a little bit irritated with me. And I said, "Can you please change the name? Reverse the name, like my first name, sometimes people mistaken it." And so I can see his face is changing a little bit. So, but he put the name, he put my first name as the last name. And so he said, "Oh, you're here." So, so I'm relieved and happy to have a, a place. And so he said, "So, Michelle is your first name?" He asked it. And I said, "No. First of all, it's not Michelle, it's Mikhail. And it's not my, my first name, it's my last name." So he goes, "Okay, and so how do you say your first name?" He said. So at this point, I'm happy because he's asking me to learn my first name. So I said, and I said calmly and slowly, I said, "Alganish." So he has his ID, the ID card that I gave him is still in his hand. So he looked at it, and he said it, and he said, "Oh, it's exactly how it is spelt." And I said, "Thank you." So at this time, I'm like, "I'm on you." So, and, so, as foreign as it sounds, my, you know, my name, it's really easy. When you see it, it's exactly how it is spelt. It's pronounced exactly how it is spelt. And so I, I know people have sometimes hard time looking at the name, afraid to pronounce, but please do not be afraid, try it, even if you, I, I would not be offended even if you must occur the name. And I have done that so many times with foreign names, including American name, which is foreign to me when I first came to this country. But anyways, having said that, we'll go back to our, we'll go back to our program. So I, as I said, I'm one of the South Burlington mentor. In South Burlington, SB Mentoring is a South Burlington School District, school-based mentoring program. As you can see in the, in the background, some of the faces of SB Mentoring, young leaders and their mentors. South Burlington, SB Mentoring matches young adult, adults one-on-one with students in grades K-7 for one hour of friendship per week during the school year, on school property, during the school hours. The mission, the mission of SB Mentoring is to allow young people to find their spark, their passion and interest. According to a search institute research, sharing interests with caring adult helps young people make good decisions later in their life. I am now proud to introduce one of our young leader, who I was just informed that not here tonight, but his mentor, Scott Bascom.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Alex Spencer. I have a mentor here, South Burlington Mentoring Program. I've mentored for two years now in this program. I mentor a young leader, his name is Scott Bascom, as you mentioned, he couldn't make it tonight. He's a 6th grader here at Tuttle Middle School, a very great kid. And I'm here tonight, I'm just going to tell you a little more about South Burlington Mentoring. If you can't tell, I, I'm actually a firefighter across the street at the Fire Department. Got a little, used a little bit of my leave time today to come over and speak. But, well, to speak on behalf of Scott, so just a little history, the South Burlington Mentoring Program has been at Chamberlain Orchard and Market Central School, and here at the middle school. Next year, 2016, we're going to be at the high school as well. And this year, we also have, we have 50, we have 100 people in the program, including 50 young leaders and 50 mentors. Myself and Scott attended, as well as several of the other mentors and mentees, had our spring celebration that was held here on May 7th. We had over 150 people there, including my colleagues of the South Burlington Fire Department. We brought a fire truck and an ambulance over. The South Burlington Police Department participated, the Recreation Department, the library, many different community members were there. We also had several volunteers from the South Burlington High School who participated as well. We were very glad to have them there. We had a nice day, spent some time in the cafeteria with some activities, and then went outside. And there's a great picture right there, as you can see, with my colleagues brought the ladder truck over, and we all stood in front, and we actually did the same thing last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am now proud to introduce to you another one of our young leader and his mentor, who will share a project dated this, this year. Isaac and Hank Fisher.
I'm in 2nd grade, and I am 8.
My name's Hank Fisher, and Isaac and I work together once a week, and he has a project to show you that he put together and made.
It's a bird feeder, and we cut a hose to make the handle, and we put a lock on it so squirrels can't get in. You pull it up and push it, and then it opens, and you put the bird feed in here, and it comes out the bottom, so the birds can eat it.
So when are you going to put it up? You going to put it up sometime soon?
Yeah.
Yeah?
For sale?
Looks good. Looks like a really good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hold up the bird feeder, though. All right. Gotcha, great job. Yeah. You're giving me something. Boy, that's very nice of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac and Hank. I am now grateful to introduce you Matt McNeil of Howard Center, who will present the 2015 Assessment Report of South Burlington Mentoring.
Hello, everyone. Again, I'm Matt McNeil. I'm the Director of Evaluation and Outcomes for Howard Center. And once upon a time, I was a social worker here in this district and loved it, and so I'm always happy to come back. I'm going to give you a brief walkthrough about the evaluation we did for the mentoring program this year. There's a larger Underbridge Report if you're interested, or if you have questions. So, do you want to go on to the next one? So what we were seeking to do was to get direct, first-person feedback from the four major stakeholders involved in the mentoring program. The mentees themselves, the mentors, school staff, and of course, the guardians of the mentees. And so we did that using confidential surveys. And the survey was broken down into really kind of four areas to measure whether or not relationships were being developed, whether or not there was evidence of social-emotional learning as an outcome. We wanted to measure communication within the program, and of course, just to get a general sense of the quality and the need for quality improvement over the course of the program. So the rationale on why we designed the study this way is we wanted to align with the South Burlington ends policy, and we also wanted to align with what we know about how mentoring programs promote the development of developmental assets, and what we know about best practices in mentoring programs kind of across the nation. And again, we're looking for ways, obviously, to continuously improve the program and its functioning. So just to set some context, we'll go to the next one. The first variable I always look at in doing survey evaluation is the number of surveys that get returned. So this year, we got 180 returned, which is pretty remarkable. The state of Vermont, the Department of Mental Health, evaluates the mental health system across the state in a very similar way. And what they do is every two years, they send a survey, one year to kids and then one year to their families. And this past two-year cycle, the 2012, 2013 that they reported on, they got 560 back, which averages out to 280 for the entire state. So this program here, South Burlington, got 180 back, and the state of Vermont, 280, which is pretty amazing. But not if you know Susie. It all kind of makes sense if you know Susie. So I'm just going to walk you through some of the results that we found. We asked the mentees, do they enjoy spending time with their survey, or with their mentor, not with their survey? They probably don't enjoy spending time with their surveys. And almost 98% agree that they did. And if you work in a school, you know that getting 98% of students who can anything is pretty remarkable. The next, we asked them, do they look forward to seeing their mentor? Do they look forward to going to school on days they see their mentor? And 93% said they did. So we asked this question because the rationale is that if looking forward to going to school to see their mentor, it will likely boost attendance rates. We also gave them a chance to use one word to describe their mentor, and here's kind of a smattering of the responses. Awesome, fun, funny, really nice, fabulous, and my favorite, "She's the best." We got 42 responses from the mentors themselves. And the first question we asked them was, does being involved in this mentoring program make you feel more connected to the community? And 95% thinks it does. We also know that mentoring relationships get enriched the longer they last, and so it's really important that mentors feel good over time. And so we asked them, would their experience was more enriching over time? And 88% said it did. We also gave them a chance, too, to kind of give like first-person narratives about open-ended responses, and here are some of the responses. to school to see their mentor, it will likely boost attendance rates. We also gave them a chance to use one word to describe their mentor, and here's kind of a smattering of the responses. Awesome, fun, funny, really nice, fabulous, and my favorite, she's the best. We got forty-two, uh, responses from the mentors themselves. And, uh, the first question we asked them was, does being involved in this mentoring program make you feel more connected to the community? And ninety-five percent thinks it does. Um, we also know that mentoring relationships get enriched the longer they last, and so it's really important that mentors feel good over time. And so we asked them, would their experience was more enriching over time? And eighty-eight percent said it did. We also gave them a chance too to kind of give like first-person narratives about open-ended responses. And here's some of the, uh, responses we got. This is an amazing program with defined batteries, uh, boundaries and a support system. Make it a pleasure to be a part of. I believe that each mentor is creating a space that will change the world to the lives of those involved. If you read the full report, there's a ton of other heartwarming quotes too. Some of my favorites. Uh, we got seventeen parents or guardians to respond to the survey. Um, and the first thing we asked is, from your impression, does your child being involved in this program just have a positive impact on their life? And eighty-seven point five percent of, um, parents and guardians responded that it did. Again, this is the attendance question too. We asked them whether or not their child seemed to be like more motivated to school on days they see their mentor. And sixty-two point five, uh, percent of parents reported that they thought that that was the case. We then surveyed, uh, classroom teachers and related school staff, and seventy-eight teachers and staff responded. And the first question we asked was, from your perspective, do you see the, uh, this program being something that involves, enhances social-emotional learning for students? And almost ninety-four percent of school staff reported that it did. Then again, to tie it back, we also asked the same thing about if they saw students seeming more motivated to come to school or happier on days that they met with their mentors. And, uh, seventy-seven point seven percent of school staff reported that students seemed happier on days that they saw their mentor. So again, we also asked them for their first-person kind of like open-ended responses. Um, and we got a, a ton of great, great narratives. I like these ones. It's amazing to see the relationship build between the mentor and the student. You can literally see the student grow and blossom throughout the year. Their confidence grows and they really look forward to their time together. So, uh, just a quick couple of the notes about the survey. Again, the report is available to you if you'd like to see it, and it's, uh, it's long, but there's a lot of good detail in it. Um, we got a hundred and eighty responses this year. That's up from one sixty-one last year. Um, the results, this is the third year we've done this similar evaluation, and the results have kind of stayed remarkably similar from year to year. We also saw, um, another good indicator of how powerful the survey is, is how much people write. And people literally wrote pages and pages of narrative. And lastly, um, if you look, we asked similar questions for all four of the stakeholder groups, and if you compare the questions that we asked, all four groups are rating very similarly. Students feel the same way as the parents do, as the mentors do, as the school staff less, which is a great sign about the health of a program. That's it. Any questions or?
Have there been any, uh, over the course of time, have there been any difference, any trends that have been taking place in South Burlington?
Um, do you mean in terms of the survey responses?
Terms of the survey response or participation rates or success measures?
Sure. So the program has grown every single year and the response rate has grown every single year. Interestingly enough, I asked that same question to Susie, if she had like any areas that she wanted to examine over the time. And so we pulled out four variables, and it was amazing to see the graphs that were basically like flat lines.
It's hard to, hard to improve ninety-eight percent?
It's hard to improve ninety-eight percent exactly. Yes. Yes. Good question.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, that concludes our presentation. If there is any questions, to Susie, that is.
Of course.
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie.
Yes, Marty.
Susie, so how do you see the program growing as far as the number of mentors and mentees? And how are you recruiting additional mentors?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you, Marty. So recruiting mentors is never something that concerns me at all. We have people just waiting to be asked and we just finished a strategic planning process and some of the people here tonight were part of that, which was great. And the surveys are showing us that, uh, staff members feel passionate about our growing the program. And so we brought that before the Strategic Planning Committee and their results will then be presented to David to see if that fits in with the school district's vision as well. Um, and I, you know, next year, it, um, in order to maintain our grant money, they do like to see a slight increase every year to justify giving us this substantial amount of grant money. And, um, I think, you know, our vision is to allow every single young person, grades K through twelve, to have a mentor someday. And that's, that's the vision right now that we're aiming towards. Is that too wishy-washy in response, Marty?
Is it a increase in participation that you're, that the metric is? What's the metric for improvement they're looking for?
The, I'm so sorry.
You said there was something needed to improve year to year to get sustained funding or something. What, what metric is that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a great question. We have two, um, broad categories we have to fulfill. One is that they do wanna see growth in numbers and they also have a list of quality program guidelines that they want us to fulfill each year. So those are things, uh, that range from ensuring that meeting times are consistent weekly and the quality of materials that we're providing. There's a whole range of things that we're required to prove that we're doing.
Thank you.
I have a, more of an observation. I, um, Pat Burke, um, the work that John Painter's doing on the Roland Foundation, has he, um, well, it seems to me it would be a good connection to kind of look at the continuum of students' experiences within the South Burlington District to kind of look at mentoring as it segues into any recommendations that might be made on advisories. I, it seems to me the common denominator is sort of, uh, relationships with adults and continuity of those relationships and, and that kind of advisory mentor type role. But I, I don't know if he's ever looked beyond a little bit of segue into the middle school.
I think that's a, that's an interesting point. I think that there are definitely places where the, they'll be intersect, you know? For example, any sophomore looking for a community member to be on their exhibition who's, to attend their exhibition who's been involved in the mentoring program is really not gonna have a hard time finding somebody to come to their, um, exhibition. Um, but that's definitely something I could, I could talk to John about and, and obviously, you know?
Yeah, it's my observation, just here, being reminded of the mentoring program and then having sat sporadically on the working group on, uh, John's work. It seems like that's, uh, it, it's definitely something that, um, I think our district's done a good job at and it's starting to, there are maybe multiple programs that become kind of touchpoints for a continuum for a student.
Yeah, without a doubt. Yeah. And, and, you know, it's probably best if I put Susie and John and put really Johnny, to be honest.
Well, she's on, she's on the event.
I, I know. Not that.
There was an amazing connection that happened this spring with the mentoring program through our ELL program that we had some grant money for a student, um, to support students new to, um, the United States and actually tapped into one of our mentors to come and support, um, for a short time, you know, to help with some of those transition pieces. So, um, that was a wonderful way to kind of make connections with the mentoring program.
And actually, we're doing it in all of our elementary schools with that. And it has been a great segue because there are people already trained to work with young students. And, um, it's, um, Carol Blakely, Jenna Haden, Jennifer Hope, who was really their brainchild to, uh, to tap the, the mentor program to act as these kind of ambassadors for kids who are just actively interested.
So there's, I, I'm, again, I'm so proud of, uh, the program and obviously, you know, Susie and I'll just say the mentor family. And I think, you know, there's all kinds of these other connections and you, you allude to, you know, the sophomore exhibition is one. As the board knows, we, we put some money in the, in this year's budget around strengthening and helping to support mentorship, looking at our Wellness and Resilience Program because there are those connections as well as our We All Belong Program, which is equity, diversity and inclusion. And so when you start to just even talk about those, those, those connections to really caring, supportive adults continues to be that, you know, that spark, if, if I can kind of lop onto the, the spark of mentor, mentoring. And so, um, I think we have a lot of work still to do. Administratively, we're working on how to move that forward, um, and to see all of the kind of interconnects. But we absolutely know, and I think the board plays a major role in that too, in your, in your participation, but we know how important, you know, having other caring adults in children's lives are and, um, what magnitude that has on their ability to continue to learn and prosper. So, um, I think, you know, we are, we are learning every day. Um, Susie and I often have a, a passing in the hallway, we did this morning, and, you know, all these other kind of things that are happening and connections, whether it's the, what are we, the solarium in the, in the entry of the middle school here where the tiles are being painted and how that's happening and, you know, kind of experiencing how those are, um, being decorated is, is quite, quite interesting. So, anyway, I'm very happy and again, I appreciate we've got mentors still hanging around. I kind of feel bad and thank you, John, for suggesting to move up on that, um, as we had some students with us too. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks. Do you want to stick with this agenda item or should we?
Yeah, if, if you want to just go back for a bit, uh, I'd like to just make sure that the board knows I, I did have this in your packet, but I didn't have it, I had it in the, the salary action on the principal, which is one thirteen, three forty-seven. Um, it didn't make it in your packet. It's in the signed, it's in the signed packet. Um, so that's, that's two back. But number seven, I think we should, if we're good to go with that one.
Okay, so why don't we, we will shift, um, back to Agenda Item Seven, which is on the Master Planning, Financial Stewardship and City School Collaboration item.
So let me just, uh, on the City School Collaboration, Elizabeth and I have had one meeting, you know, we have one meeting. We, we've had a, a recent meeting with Pat and Kevin. And as a result of that conversation, in knowing that tonight was gonna be the sharing from the task force, we scheduled another meeting. I'm saddened to say that Kevin Dorn's mom passed away and he's gonna be, he has some ceremonies that he needs to, or events that he needs to, uh, go to on Friday. So our Friday meeting has been rescheduled to Monday. Elizabeth, myself, Kevin and Pat Nowak. So I do think that there's going to be some time to have some conversation, but I think from my perspective, now moving into the master planning and visioning, I think the board really needs to have the opportunity to look at the report. Couldn't really do it justice in twenty, thirty minutes. It's close to a hundred pages long. Um, I will make sure that that gets posted up so that the entire community will have the opportunity to see it. I would suggest that the board review it and perhaps have some questions, funnel those through me. I'll get those to Elizabeth, Elizabeth then, and I can at least begin the process of having the conversation with also the city folks. And then I think, you know, we'll be on to another meeting, probably to solidify some of those, those directions. But again, there's a lot, lot to think about. Um, I, I think there was a fair amount of things that were on, you know, they weren't able to get to, and that I, I think that the board probably has some questions about. So.
Yeah, I understand the two-week period for getting comments back was just a suggestion. Uh, and I'm almost certain more time is gonna be needed than two weeks, um, 'cause I'm traveling about eight days of those two weeks. Um, so, I mean, when you talk to Pat and Kevin, I think it explained that it's gonna be longer than that. Soon-ish.
And are we getting, were we getting that electronically?
Yeah, I will, I will send it to you electronically. Um, and it will also be posted up on city and school site. The idea that, that Art was trying to say is, you know, if there were things that needed to get, you know, were, were further questions, then he would work those into the report.
So it, so it will be posted initially as a draft report then?
Yeah, so, or version one, you know, that was presented on June third, you know, just for clarity purposes for the community. But we want to make sure, we, we, we're not gonna print off the hundred-page document and we also didn't want to get out ahead of time. We wanted the, the board and the city council to get it, you know, kind of in that pure form. Nor was it really totally ready until very close to the end, so.
Okay. All right. If, if there is anything that comes up from board members in advance of our meeting on Monday, we're happy to kind of take that into a working session. But I think we talked at our last meeting that we anticipate both the city council and the school board will be working a lot over, largely over the summer, but certainly beyond that. And that part of, part of the work will be kind of prioritizing, your question, Dan, about prioritizing the work and putting some kind of a calendar together to accomplish that, so.
Including the public process as well? I mean, that, that'll be mapped out as part of this work, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, again, we talked at the last meeting, likely backwards, planning some dates and some, some suggestions. I anticipate that the board may be asking me for that, um, and some ideas around how we, how we move forward. But, um, again, I think it's important that you get a chance to begin to digest the, the report and start asking questions.
All right. Any other questions or comments on master planning? A lot of work ahead.
Hmm.
All right, we'll move, uh, on to Agenda Item Eight and the second item, Tuition Student Enrollment Update.
So we put a, a fair amount of data together for the board and, um, you know, one of the decisions, you know, that I had, and I shared that with you, is that I wanted to really try to make sure with any staffing requests or enrollment pieces, you know, you're able to see that more in, uh, in a unified way. And so in, in your packet, you do have the breakdown of our, our tuition enrollment update and what's happening there. Um, you know, I think it's been identified by the board that we have some high level of volatility, volatility around our tuition students. And I would say our volatility is to the positive. Um, and that has, that has basically been the continuing practice. It's the second in, it should be, it looks like, the cover looks like this. Are you not seeing that in your, in your board packet, green?
I'm not recognizing it if it's here.
Go to your green, uh, packet. Should be second or third in.
Is it more of a trend than volatility?
I mean, if we're seeing. It's a trend, but I think it's still.
If we're seeing that continuing increase.
It's in the, it's in the superintendent's report packet.
It's like this.
So the three items are listed?
Yep.
Yeah, that's it, Dan.
Okay. So, again, this year in our budget, um, we based our enrollment expectations around a hundred and twenty-four students. And, um, obviously you can see that we have a significant, or, um, significant increase, obviously to the one forty-five. So I think, you know, we are very fortunate that students want to continue to come to South Burlington. Again, I say volatility because if that number significantly changes, it has the net opposite effect. So, um, again, trying to provide some clarity around when we're talking about staffing needs, we should talk about also tuition and what's happening there. In the past, we've kind of isolated, I haven't necessarily presented this at the same time and, uh, that was a want. And again, John, um, you know, worked hard to put, pull this stuff together for me. So I, I don't know if they have particular questions related to trends, informations, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I think my, you know, a couple of questions that come to mind for me is, one, I know we've had some conversation in the past about potentially approaching some of other districts and I'll just say formalizing, but having a conversation around a more of a, um, uh, preferred school choice relationship of some kind. Um, and I think kind of the time has come to maybe move that forward a little bit, even if it's informally. I think the other piece, and I know Dan has really brought this up and it's, we're gonna be going into it next on staffing, but, um, you know, if you look at, if you just look at the three-year trend here, um, of resident students, actually, I don't know if it's three-year, is it? Or two-years?
It's two.
Fifteen and sixteen.
It's two-year, but one's got a projection or a budget versus actual. So, um, the, um, non-resident students are a pretty significant piece of the declining total enrollment. And I do, I think that's something we really need to look at because, um, when we, when we start talking about staffing, when we start talking about some of the master visioning work that we're talking about here, um, there come, there needs to be a clear understanding of the reliance on the number of students that are coming to South Burlington that are not residents. So that was my other observation was just how the, where that number falls relative to total enrollment and that it's growing as compared to our own student population.
Yeah, and if, um, I'm just gonna jump ahead about this one issue that occurred or, uh, one law in legislature that goes to this point, 'cause otherwise I'll forget by the time we get there. Um, the, the laws change where a school can designate, it used to be they could designate one high school, like Grand Isles, Isle of Man, those kind of places, and, and they didn't because it, they.
Limited.
It was too limited. But now they can designate, uh, up to three.
students are a pretty significant piece of the declining total enrollment. And I do, I think that's something we really need to look at because when we, when we start talking about staffing, when we start talking about some of the master visioning work that we're talking about here, there come, there needs to be a clear understanding of the reliance on the number of students that are coming to South Burlington that are not residents. So that was my other observation was just how the, where that number falls relative to total enrollment and that it's growing as compared to our own student population.
And if, I'm just going to jump ahead about this one issue that occurred or one law in legislature that goes to this point, because otherwise I'll forget by the time we get there. The, the law has changed where a school can designate, it used to be they could designate one high school, like Grand Isles, Isle of Mott, those kind of places. And, and they didn't because it, they.
Limited.
It was too limited. But now they can designate up to three. So if there is a move of, of these various schools to go ahead and designate, we obviously want to make sure that, that we would be one of those three. So that should be part of our reaching out to those school districts.
So a couple of quick observations. I know I've had conversations with, with Martin and with Elizabeth to kind of, on the, the outreach. As you know, we've been doing some outreach. We have, although not on a regular basis, worked to attend some of those school board meetings, just to show our presence. It's also about supporting kind of the, the work that they're doing and knowing that we are a receiver of their students. There's been a concerted effort, as you know, with the high school and kind of our outreach piece with Deb Barretta. And that, that has been an important piece. I think we are ready though, to your point, Elizabeth, is to formalize a process where, by which we would understand 361 better. And Martin's highlighting some of those things. And to begin the conversation, you know, with some, I have had the conversation with the, with the Grand Isle superintendent, whom is, is likely going to be changing hi- his position. So we'll have to begin to start, you know, at least from my perspective, we may have to start in with kind of some board conversations and see if we can get on there, but understand that they may be in flux for a bit. So some timelining, formalized planning, understanding 361. And I'd be happy to put some of that together as I think it is important, given what you're seeing as, as trend data. And I would say it's, it's equally important to our students in, in a resident program because we do want to maintain those program. That is, this is in fact the issue within Vermont where when enrollments significantly go down, and we're not seeing that, but when, where they significantly go down means your only response is really, you have to minimize programs. And we, we don't want to be in that situation. And I think we're well positioned, certainly with the leadership that we have to do that. So I'd be open to, you know, putting something together, a more formal way around kind of some steps, if that would be the pleasure of the board.
I think.
Yes?
It will be. Yes.
I guess along those lines, just to finish up on that issue, if we could figure out a timeline where we're making board to board contact as well. And if there were anything to happen under the auspices of Act 361, we would want to see if that could happen sooner rather than later because of the significant incentives that could be there for the community members. So we probably want to sometime this summer even start doing our own board outreach to, to those boards.
And I don't, I don't want, so yes, I also don't want to let go of some of the work that this board did and Patrick, because he's in the room and also joined me down in my peer year. But I don't want to lose sight of choice, the choice conversation and how that also melds in with, with this as well. And obviously some of the information that you see here in choice around revenue is in part connected to what law changed and where we are today. And I think that, that should also be melded in there with perhaps some ideas and options and actions.
And we don't, we don't cap students from a choice standpoint, is that correct?
Currently, we don't. We, well, to my knowledge, we never have. Patrick, your time?
Never have. Came close, but didn't. In terms of non-resident tuition paying choice students.
Right. And I do think, you know, the idea of recognizing, you know, the, the enrollment, enrollment projections from some of our surrounding communities and then what might be a reasonable, particularly around designations, you know, what would we be able to and willing to accept in, in any one year? You know, would it be their whole entire population? And we would, we would have to talk about that and look at the communities in which we'd be feeding that. Or should it be a one-third, one-third, one-third option? Again, I'm just throwing that out, but you know, maybe there's some conversation that we need to happen, perhaps even with other schools, other districts that might be in the same. So.
Do we have a total enrollment cap? You know what I mean? Like by grade?
We do. I mean, obviously we have a capacity. We have a seat capacity. We have some program capacity. In part where we're going to segue into the next part is, you know, we do have, you know, as a result of some of our incoming tuition, we, we have some programmatic things that are needing to be addressed. So we could say we, we can't have more because, you know, we, we're going to have to add sections.
We talked about this when we were talking about the lottery, remember? So I'm just wondering, is there, is there already currently a max or not really?
Well, I, I would say, you know, to Patrick, there's always a max.
It's a resource question. So when we get more tuition students, they come with resources.
Right.
So, no, as long as we're willing to staff it adequately.
Right.
When people, when students come without resources, then that's problem X. So, so I'm hearing your question, that's a resource question. That's why there's caps in one place when they come with no resources, yet there's, there's no cap in another because there are requisite resources that hedge students.
There's ultimately a capacity issue, seat type, but that we're far from that.
I mean, capacity issue in terms of like the physical building, we could be, we could be at 1,100 students and we, you know, we could create it, but we could do it.
That's kind of where I thought you were going, kind of the.
We've been at 1,000 in the history of the school. We're at 840.
Right. Lots of.
That's the question. Okay. Thanks.
So I'm happy to put a plan together and share with the board around kind of those next steps.
All right. Should we move on to staffing requests?
So I, I actually have held off on this because again, I wanted to pull all of this stuff together. I also want to, at the same time, not to make this request more complicated. I also wanted to have finality around our current pending waiver. And our waiver, which has been in play, allowed students from Orchard and Chamberlain to go to Rick Marcock. And so we were very close. Actually, we had decision. Stuart worked hard on this for me. We had a decision from the agency. Before we actually went forward, I wanted one more confirmation in a letter, which all of this is contained in your packet, actually the, the lengthy packet. And what then came back from Rebecca is they wanted to look into it again. We've gotten confirmation back from Rebecca and her staff through federal AOE that we, as a result of the waiver still remaining current, we have to still offer choice to Orchard and Chamberlain. So the staffing changes that are in front of you, I've reviewed and worked with the administrators. The kindergarten enrollment at Chamberlain is such that it is, we're at 47. We're at one of the largest classes that we've ever had. I've estimated even if choice happens and 10 go, I'm still in the place where Holly is where we need three teachers. So I'm hopefully not confusing you that I've, I've pulled in kind of the choice related concerns specific to staffing. But my request currently is outlined in here around the kindergarten, the kindergarten at Chamberlain. There's some additions at the high school of point three in social studies, point two in mathematics, point two in Japanese, point two in music at middle school and point six in visual arts. And so I don't want to skip over that front page for you around the FTEs. Number of teachers that we had currently budgeted was 236.9. This request pulls in 2.5 additions that would bring us up to 239.4. The specific requests, obviously I've just touched on, on Chamberlain. The high school, again, adding more sections as a result of that larger incoming class of students. And again, Patrick talked about the resourcing. The point two in math is a request is a result of keeping a focus on our student-led advisory program and allowing the CAS person to be able to do that. The Japanese, again, also to expand that as a result of interest and also keep our, our, our VTLC program moving. At the middle school, what I would tell you, and again, Carsten and Paul in trying to move forward, the middle school came up with an innovative schedule change to add an innovation period at the end of, end of the day. A lot of this, although we talked about it, we didn't think it was going to have as much of an impact on our, our visual and performing arts. But what it then, what it has done is it is actually, if they, if we stick with this, actually cramps the ability for our students to get the same amount of time in the visual and performing arts. It also, the point two corrects something that, you know, that I've become more and more mindful of around the fractionalization of our FTEs, based on the way in which our teachers and seniority is established within their content area. We have had, this past year, had a teacher, our CAS for visual and performing arts go between three schools, high school, middle school and elementary. And that, we all recognize administratively, is not ideal. It's less than ideal in the creation and connection with student and it fragments our ability and our, and our scheduling flexibility significantly. So those, those are the requests, the staffing requests. Let me pause. I also, Patrick's here and Carsten and Holly, obviously, and Stuart to answer any questions that you may have specific to this staffing request.
So may I begin with the question about the kindergarten teachers? The 47 students, what was the number that we anticipated in the budget from the student council?
We were, I think, 27. Is that, is that right, Holly, on our, on our, 27 or 30?
Thirty-three. This is projected.
Yeah.
So it's, there are 14 additional registrants versus what the budget expected?
Correct.
And so in that budget, I mean, we, we did use the McGivern work too, and we've also looked at our trend data. And again, we felt 33 was an appropriate projection, although that, the kindergarten is always.
No, I'm not questioning whether you had a good projection. I'm just trying to understand whether reality is different from what was expected in some significant way. And can I make the inference that the rest of the populations are reasonably close to the planning?
It's, it's in here. It's in here, Dan.
Second page, Dan.
Middle column is the budget on this, on the other page, right there.
Back here. Page two.
And, and maybe just to augment that, I mean, the total for kindergartens was at 158. And actually, the total is coming under the 2015 actual by three. So it's relatively flat.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, I, I guess I'd ask the obvious question of if it's going down at Central and Orchard, why wouldn't we staff Chamberlain with adjustments in staff at those two facilities?
You make the, make the reduction, you mean? You may, or make a, a change, a lateral movement. Part of that is that, you know, again, you, this is again, part of what was highlighted in the master planning task force is that you've got three, three locations. And when you start to divide that then by two or by one, those ratios climb to what we, what we say is not, not acceptable.
I guess just along that line is, you were already projecting for kindergarten class size at Central School to be 20, 19.7 students per class. And, and if you were to cut to two teachers for kindergarten there, you would have a 20 and 21, which is not that different from what you already were looking to have as far as class sizes. Personally, I think that's a little big for kindergarten, but it just doesn't seem to be a significant difference from what you were proposing before.
Well, again, that, that number, what we know, and we're, this is part of the reason why the delay, why I have delayed it, is that we have what we have as students that continue to register through the summer. That doesn't mean that they can't move either. But the reality is our numbers always seem to go up between now and the start of the school year. So my, my issue is I'm very, very dangerously, you know, making, those are dangerous moves when, when the enrollment fluctuation is not significant, particularly if I do have some choice students that, that move. And under the, under the waiver, I don't have to offer it to kindergarten, but I think that would be significantly, you know, disadvantageous because it's those that are identified that are currently in the program have choice. We feel that, that, that option should exist for the entire program. So there's some volatility that some Chamberlain or some Orchard could go to Rick Marcock, which is only going to add to my, my issue of concern. John?
I just kind of want to emphasize that David and Stuart have pushed the agency very hard to get clarification on this waiver. And we, this all was out to the board Friday at noon or whenever it goes out. And, and David got the phone call at three o'clock Friday afternoon. So it's, it's just new information. And Central's decrease across the board may change because of this, this now choice. So it's, it's even, even after we've done the analysis, things changed.
When does the, when do you have to know enrollment? Like, when do people have to let you know? What's the cut?
We'll, we'll, I'm sorry. But we'll be sending out a letter tomorrow, but.
What we do know is when we didn't believe we were going to have to offer choice, we have nine students went back to their home schools because we were no longer providing transportation because they had the right to stay. So I believe that now when we have to offer transportation again, one would assume that those nine students, or at least a good number of them would go back to Central. Those are not kindergarten students, obviously, but they do have impact on, on the other class sizes.
And I will tell you, I have waited and, you know, I've got Holly staring at me, that when are you going to make decisions on these waivers? And I told, and Stuart that I don't want to make these decisions until I have a full picture of where the agency is on the waiver. And I wanted to roll it all in together with looking at how to allocate the resources, not just elementary, but across the board. And so I'm very concerned about the volatility. New kids coming in to, to kindergarten, choice option, go to Rick Marcock. Already, I don't think I'm going to have enough that will move out of Chamberlain with a high number of 47. So it walks into, I need, I need, I believe, I very strongly need that, that kindergarten addition at, at Chamberlain.
I, I'm going to resist not being really sarcastic and say if we asked them once and got yes, and asked them a second time and got no, should we just ask again? But the.
Can I say yes, no?
Yeah. Well, we, we communicated this to parents, correct?
We communicated to parents that we were, as a result of, we're in the next year, no more choice. And you, your child who's there can stay, but you'll have to transport.
Right.
We currently, this is new information that we'll need to get out. We could ignore it and wait, but then if we had everyone find out, that I believe is disadvantageous way to, to communicate.
So I, I think one of the fundamental questions I have, because I think kindergarten is kind of a microcosm for the whole district, is we, we've had some issues come up in the past around FTEs. We know we have an issue that the audit group came in, I believe, and said that we, because of the way we used to have contract employees in.
It's here too.
Yeah. In a couple of areas, we now have to count those employees as FTEs and pay benefits, correct?
Correct.
Yes. It, it winds up that that's point two and a point three. So it's not full FTEs. And if the, if we hire a contractor that is a corp, part of a corporation, we don't have to count them as employees. So it's, it's tricky. But if we hire the same people, extended the same contract we have to the same people, yes, they'd be employees. Yes.
And, and my recollection also is when we went through FT kind of staff and student ratios, we had a couple of full-time equivalent headcount that showed up in the budget that I'm not sure the board realized was, I mean, I have to refresh my memory on this.
Well, yes. It was changes during the year.
Right.
And that is the starting point here, where I said the budget. That's the number that actual, actually was there.
But that, the point was those are headcount that happened in the middle of the year that were adjustments to the budget. So the, the bottom line from my standpoint is we are exhibiting the same phenomenon the state is. state is having, which enrollment is declining and our staffing levels are increasing. So, if you look at the actual-to-actual fifteen and sixteen, we've got forty-one less students, resident students, twenty-five less total students, and we're proposing increases to staff. And I understand there are a lot of one-off discussions of what's justifiable in terms of programming. I think this is a really tough sell to the community.
I think it supports some of the task force work in that having three elementary schools makes it really hard, because we haven't lost a group of students in one grade level in one school.
Yep.
Can I ask a, can I ask a budget question? Is this, is the added K teacher here in the contingency fund already?
Yes.
That's what you're asking for? You're asking to use the contingency fund?
Yeah, but I don't have the right to do that. That was part of...
Right, okay.
It's in, it's in, but it, it's not counted as a FTE in the budget, because it's a contingency.
Right.
We'd be adding a teacher then, so...
But we have the money set aside for this.
Yes.
Yes.
But it's going to erode the ratios.
I got it, yeah.
Or, it's going to decrease the, the ratio in that particular, not erode, not, not take it away, it's going to decrease the number.
Overall, you're going to have more, more FTEs and fewer students, so it's going to erode the ratio.
So, do you have the, offhand, do you have the prior year's enrollment and staffing levels? So, we have a three-year trend?
I don't have that here with you, no. I only have the, I have really the elementary, three elementary school look back on enrollment, enrollment projections only. FTE doesn't totally calculate, because it's classroom teachers only at elementary FTEs on the bottom.
So, David, just to be clear, you're looking on action tonight from the board to support your recommendations to add? Two-point-five FTEs? Is that correct?
Correct.
Or two-point-five teachers?
It's a total of two-point-five FTEs.
Over a budgeted number of FTEs in the approved budget of...
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a budgeted FTE?
Two-thirty-six, two-thirty-six-point-nine was what was budgeted.
And does that include these contract employees?
No, they're not, they're not teachers, but...
They're other support staff.
But will FTEs go up in aggregate?
Based on that, those retirement changes?
No.
The, I mean, the, by calculating those retirement changes?
Not retirement changes. Looking at these contractors, will FTEs go up again?
No.
Well, I guess they could.
Well, they will, if we pay benefits.
I mean, once again, one of them is a point-two, they work one day a week, and the other one works a day and a half a week, so it could go up as much as half, half an FTE. Right. One of, one of those contractors has actually resigned.
Right, so...
Yeah.
Is that the only staffing, open staffing issue?
Yes, there's the support staff. And paras, we've, we've gone, according to budget plan, for cutting those paras down by six. That was in the budget.
In the budget, right.
Yeah.
So, again, do we have aggregate staff, staffing numbers for fifteen and for sixteen?
When you say aggregate, that, that, looking at the total FTEs for the entire district?
Yes.
With everyone rolled up? I, I don't have those here to, tonight, no. We do have them. From bus drivers, part-time, you know, nutrition service, et cetera.
So, I guess, I mean, just, I know there's, there's flux right now, and, and we're not going to know exactly where all the kindergarten students are going to go, but if you look, even if, if you, if three kids decide not to go to Orchard School, for instance, you know, it's on the high end, but you'd have a class of eighteen, eighteen, and nineteen, as opposed to thirteen, you know, thirteen and fourteen, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, sorry, if you kept four teachers there. It just seems like there, there's room, depending on how the dust settles, to reconfigure between the school that has four, the school that has three, and the school that has two teachers. And, and I, I mean, we, given what's going on statewide, we're very hard-pressed to, as others are cutting right now, for us to be adding. And, and I am troubled, though, by having kindergarten classes of eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. But that one's a little tough, until we know exactly what we're dealing with. I mean, how long can we put such a decision off?
Yeah, and again, I, I, you know, I'm troubled, you know, with what's going on in the state. I don't think that's the right trend. It does need to be specific to, to the building. You know, we have made some tough choices in budget. We reduced two teachers, you know, at both of the, at Chamberlain and at Rick Markcott. Rick Markcott still is going to remain at one less for next year. I was hopeful that our numbers planned out and budgeted appropriately, but, I mean, when you, when you look at the trend data, you know, thirty-three projected in the year before that at, at Chamberlain of, what, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, you know?
Well, but I guess here, here's, here's, I, here's where I have the biggest problem with all this, is that it was acceptable back at budget time for there to be at Central School an average of nineteen-point-seven students per class in kindergarten.
Mm-hmm.
You found that acceptable then, and now we're saying we can't accept a class of eighteen, eighteen, and nineteen? If, you know, just depending on where the dust settles. You know, I had trouble with that twenty, you know, the nineteen-point-seven, or, or it's going to pan out, but that was a recommendation from the, from the administration, and I went with that. But, but now, all of a sudden, that's a number that you're not recommending any longer, so... I mean, is there a point, I mean, where we're going to find out where the dust settles? How, how soon will we know exactly where? I mean, I know there might be, you know, over the summer, I just mean from the choice issue that the letter's going out tomorrow, on how that's going to affect kindergarten.
We, we do the very best we can. We put the, we'll put this information out, we've got to give some people the, a little time to respond. That said, we try to set hard-fast rules and say, you know, anything after this, but the reality is, the law doesn't say that you, you can put a timeline on it. And so, volatility will exist throughout the entire year, that someone can make that choice and decision to move. So, the volatility remains. I, I, you know, I've been at this a long time, and staffing is, in the elementary levels, always hard. Our, our elementary classroom size, physical space size at Chamberlain is small, and so where you can say, that doesn't seem unreasonable, you know, where you could say eighteen or nineteen, I'll tell you, the, the physical square footage of our, of our kindergartens and some of our spaces at, at Chamberlain are problematic. So, I also have to be mindful about placement, placement decisions, teacher relationships, those are all part of, you know, having your children be able to know and, and make those connections. We walk into the start of the school year, one week before, and then I've got change, you know, so we could wait, and I don't, I don't think that's advantageous, you know, to student learning, really. And I, I put pressures on, on configurations, I know Diane's the question.
Yeah, sorry, Diane.
I just wonder, kind of like, what the applicant pool would be like, too? If you wait too long to make the decision, people will sign contracts, and I just want to put that out there. Maybe you find that you do need to hire a teacher?
So, the applicant pool, obviously, we've, we made a reduction, we made two reductions, and so that's, that's in play. Obviously, we had retirements, so we didn't have to get rid of folks, but we basically, you know, we have moves that are going to need to happen if, if this does not happen, right? Which is fine. That said, if you wait, we're either in a recall, or we're in an applicant pool that may be less than advantageous, although I will tell you, and I'm not going to beat it with that, the applicant pool for elementary positions are, are, and were desirable, so I don't want to paint a negative picture there.
Can you tell me, what are the FTEs numbers that we have for the current year?
Two-thirty-nine, two-thirty-six.
No, that's, that's the budgeted. That's the budget for next year.
Oh, the year before, it's in there. So, the two-fifteen, the par left column is...
Where am I looking?
The on page two, Dave.
Punch the last one. Where, where, all right, so what were the, let me ask, what are our current FTEs?
Yeah, so I, I know what you're saying around breakdowns.
Not, not that what's budgeted, because what you're comparing now is, is what's in the budget for next year with what your two-point-five is proposing. I just want to look at it a different...
And I don't, I don't...
I, I edited way back to April, there weren't any changes in FTEs for teachers other than what was budgeted.
It's at budget.
No, but what is it for the year we're in right now? How many FTEs do we have?
He's saying it's at budget.
Um, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, you're, you're wanting it more programmatically, right?
Well, well, I guess, well, on the second page, it says, the, the effect on budget of additional requests, teachers, two-hundred-and-thirty-six-point-nine plus new requests. Is that two-hundred-and-thirty-six-point-nine is what we have budgeted for next year, right?
For sixteen, that's right.
Right, and we've cut from what we have currently. I'm just, you know, looking, you know, are we relative to this year, with the two-point-five, would we still be under what we have for this current year? Because I know there was not just the two FTE cuts, there was, I thought there was...
I don't, I don't have the numbers with me, but I don't, I think it's an increase, I'm, of, of what I remember.
I, I recall it being an increase as well.
That what was being, what was an increase, the, the FTEs next year versus current?
Which is why it was a discussion.
Right, what I want to say, in order to, you know, to be sensitive to the total, and when we're talking FTE, we've got teachers, and we got all FTEs, right? So, we made reductions in, in para adds, you know, and, and I think you're wanting that whole aggregate picture.
Well, it's both aggregate and breakdown by employee group as well, just to see what the trend is, based on staff, student ratios, and so forth.
Martin, I know you were talking about eighteen, nineteen being high in kindergarten. Will that forty-seven, would mean we would have twenty-three and twenty-four in kindergarten, which would put that at the highest class size?
Right, right, no, I, I see that there's definitely need at Chamberlain, and I don't want to, I don't like eighteen, nineteen, but I, I'm just comparing it to what was acceptable to the administration at Central School when the budget came out. But, yeah, that goes way over there. I mean, I under, definitely understand the need for the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody's arguing the need based on that spike in enrollment. I think the challenge is, decisions get made at the individual facility level that affect the overall district budget with no offsetting anywhere else that might be justifiable, and I think that's a little bit what this board is asking administration to really evaluate, because it just seems to be we add, and add, and add, and we are replicating the state trend. And it, and, you know, it's happening at an individual facility level, and it aggregates up to perpetuating or exacerbating that trend of staffing going up and enrollment going down.
And I, I, the FTE increase is there, I'm not disputing that. You know, you hold me accountable to pull the budget together. I felt like we did a good job in forecasting. However, some volatility, increased numbers, maybe that will continue. You know, I'm going to have to make harder decisions. We're going to talk about legislative actions around three-sixty-one and what that's going to do on our cap. You know, I get it, but I'm also trying to position ourselves in a place where we are remaining to be a desirable place and not, 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 not being able to meet what we believe are important student opportunity needs, of which, I believe, in part, is why perhaps our kindergarten enrollment's a little bit up, why kids still want to come to our, you know, to our district or to our high school. I, I have to assume there's some correlation there. But that said, you hold me accountable to the budget. What I wanted to pull together for you, and I, and I am mindful that I haven't given you all of what you want, but I'm trying to, you know, from AOE and choice and federal government, big-picture tuition and information and staffing levels, trying to give you the, you know, the whole, the whole, the whole view.
So, let's, let's talk about what are options here, because the sense I have is that there is some potentially outstanding information that would be helpful to evaluate, so that there is an understanding of total staffing relative to the budget and actual, as well as maybe looking at some challenges around what was acceptable from a class-size standpoint during the budget period versus what is being proposed right now, or what is being sustained right now. I also think you've got some timeframes, that you have a critical sense of urgency on needing approval on these. Is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Which I assume is now versus even tomorrow?
Well, it's important, I mean, remember, it's about staffing and those connections and, you know, placement and move-up days and things like that that are important. I, I do want to hit on, you know, my projections for, like, Central School, and I know, and Martin brings a good point, you know, what was comfortable for me at eighteen-three, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to say it was comfortable or uncomfortable. What I did say is we put money in the budget for contingency, and I, at that point, I didn't know what was going to happen with choice, and so, part of the reason why we put money in the contingency was, quite honestly, no, no offense to Polly, I didn't think I was going to have to put a contingency teacher at Chamberlain. I thought if anything, it was probably going to have to go, you know, to Central School, given our perhaps continued choice. And so, I think, you know, to Martin's point, David, why were you comfortable, you know, at, you know, at a higher number proposed? And I will tell you, I wasn't really comfortable, but I also did want to make significant staffing adjustments at that point. So, obviously, I told you, I reduced, I reduced a teacher at, at Central, thinking that, that things were going to, were going to play out. So, again, I certainly recognize that you'd like some more information. Next board meeting is the seventeenth. Certainly, I can, you could approve, you could approve and request FTE validation, you could not approve, or you could approve contingent on getting some additional information.
Can we, could we have that information before our Friday special meeting?
I don't know. I could certainly figure out whether I could do that or not.
I would say it gets hard, you know, teachers are planning for next year, they're filling out their budgets there.
Now, I'm just trying to think about David and time, but...
Yeah, it, it's really hard to prolong that.
The current fiscal two thousand and fifteen number is two-hundred-and-thirty-three-point-seven-seven.
Thirty-three.
Two-thirty-three-point-seven-seven.
And, and John, if this were approved, it takes, it leaves like forty-six thousand dollars in contingency, is that right?
Stuff that, contingency for wages and employment and all that kind of thing, right?
Okay.
But that, but that contingency also doesn't consider the extra hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars of savings between the retirees, or it does?
Doesn't, that's not authorized in Spain.
Right.
It's new, that's new revenue.
Okay, but that's, that's new revenue, that's in the budget.
So, so we're below the budget?
Yeah, we're below the budget as far as dollars, yes.
No, well, no, on FTEs, you're saying, if it's two-thirty-three-point-seven-seven, you said, is that right?
That's right, that's the current number of teachers.
So, so we've got a gap there of about two and a half, right there.
You're, you're, you're the budget.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's where we left the budget, was with an increase of two, two and a half.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So, so these are not net, are, are we saying that these net two and a half are not new to the budget?
No, no, they're new to the budget.
They're new.
Okay, I'm, I'm still confused.
The actual two-thirty-three-point-seven-seven is the current actual.
Right.
The budget allowed for a couple new teachers to get it to two-hundred-and-thirty-six-point-nine.
Correct.
So, that's three-point-two increase in the budget, and then another two-point-five is the request.
So, so net-net, then we're up really five-point-seven?
Well, that's, if these were approved, it would be yes.
From the current actual.
I'm sorry, so the three-point-two are, are not a contingency, those are identified in budget?
Yes, yes, they're already in the budget, yeah, included in...
So, that was my question. So that was my question earlier, which is, that's what I thought. We were up last year by three point two over the budget. So, we're asking you to go up five point seven FTEs, when, again, resident students are down forty-one, and total students are going to be down twenty-five.
And this is, so that's, I'm not going to dispute that. But we've also made other budgetary decisions around other staffing levels, for instance, our para educator ratios. And we've made some reductions there. So, you're seeing teacher FTEs. And I think to your point earlier, where are we at in total aggregate in FTEs? We've tried to make some smart decisions around how we best render services and how we accommodate students to be successful. And that is in part some of our multi-tiered systems of support, looking at providing kids that. And so, again, administratively, we made some tough decisions around allocating resource more appropriately. I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to dispute the FTE, but you kind of need to look at the whole, the whole picture around what we're trying to do to advance and continue to move forward in district.
So, I guess a couple questions on the high school side of this, that, you know, we see what the student residents are for two thousand and fifteen and what was projected for two thousand and sixteen in our most recent projections. But, I mean, I'd like to understand what the ratio as far as FTEs to total students we've had at the high school for the last few years. Because I see the rationale for having the additional FTEs at the high school is because there's twenty-one additional students. But I'd like to understand, what is that relative to two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and thirteen? I did, you know, were we able to handle that many students with our current FTEs in those years or, or not? And, and I trust that that's probably, probably the answer to that is that, that we do need this additional FTEs. But it would be helpful for the decision-making on that, certainly.
But I also want to point out that the educational quality standards change from a hundred and fifty to a hundred students.
Right, so, so.
And we're not at that ratio of a hundred students.
Thank you for, that was my second part of my question, actually, which I just zoned on my own second part, which is, how much is any of this affected by the fact that you're supposed to have a hundred students max per FTE in high school?
Well, the schedule is almost done. We'll definitely be in violation of that segment. EQS will have to submit like a waiver letter or something.
So you actually have to send a waiver, you have to.
Yeah, because we'll be in violation, because we won't have a hundred students per.
You'll have more, right, right. That's what I understood, okay.
But your specific question was around the FTEs, these FTEs.
I can show you a budget, what it would look like if we were in EQS compliant.
Right, that's what I'd be very curious about as well. So.
I don't think we want to do that.
No, we could need ten, twenty more FTEs to be compliant with this thing.
Maybe.
Maybe not that many, but, okay. All right, thank you.
Did you have a question about the high school group pass there, though?
Well, yeah, the other question, I was just curious about the trend of number of, well, I tried to ask it when you were out of the room. No, I was asking as far as the trend, as far as the number of FTEs, not just this current year, but the last few years, the FTEs compared to the number of students you have.
There's another element of that equation, which is, how many classes kids register to take? So, when, you could have two hundred seniors who all take five classes, and staff that school with a lower number of teachers than if you have two hundred seniors who all take eight classes.
But like, for instance, you're asking for a social studies thing for freshmen, so that's everybody takes that class, right?
No, not, not exactly. That, that's because the, the freshman is not as small as we thought it was going to be. That's kind of the aggregate effect, but, but I just, I want to make sure that I don't sound as if I'm being evasive relative to Martin's question of kind of trending high school FTE over time. It is a function of a number of things. I can give you another example, like, it's not, well, the, the largest fluctuation is the number of classes that students enroll in. And we've seen that in the last fifteen years increase significantly. So if you went back fifteen years ago and, and found a bunch of seniors at South Burlington High School, they would tell you that senior year was your kickback year, that was when you took the minimum number, remember this? Right? That was like the, I'm just going to coast year. They took five classes, that was the minimum, that was the, the minimum. And that's what they did. And that was like the culture. And I would tell you now, it's almost the exact opposite where you've got juniors and seniors taking seven classes plus a college class, whatever. So I'm just, so when you look at that, it's like same number of kids, but, but the free period, unlike at the elementary school where the mathematics is a little more pure, I mean, it's, there's, it's harder to predict on some levels. But anyway, so I just, so that, and the, so yes, it's the, the big freshman class we have right now, current freshman's biggest class in the school. So they moved into sophomore year. So I had to move some of the people that were teaching a required course within freshman program into the sophomore program. But then we got a bigger-than-expected freshman class.
Freshman class, right.
But if you told me you don't have that, like tonight, if you say, no, you can't have it, deal with it, that, I can't actually run fewer sections for my freshmen and sophomores. You know what I mean? So my solution would come out of the program somewhere else. You know what I'm saying? So, so I wouldn't want you to be confused by that if you're like, wait a minute, why are you cutting AP year out when you told me you needed it for, for
Social Studies.
Social, for ninth grade, AP year's not a ninth grade class. Well, that's because that's the, that is among the least enrolled sections. So that's what would go away, and then I would, I have to staff where we have the kids, the most kids.
So I think we have a, oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
I, I don't want to throw numbers out, but I have the, or the budget right in front of me. And I do have the total teacher and support staff budgeted. In two thousand and fifteen, the actual total was four hundred and forty-three point nine, two hundred and thirty-three point seven seven teachers, and two hundred and ten point one three support staff. Our budget for two thousand and sixteen went down slightly to four hundred and forty-two point six seven. The, the total, total teachers, as we've seen, is two hundred and thirty-six point nine. And we reduced five paras, the total support staff was two hundred and five point seven seven. So, that's where we stood with budget. I've been searching just to make sure, I don't think we've added any support staff since the budget or talked about it. A few things maybe we'd like to do, but they haven't been formalized. So, if, if the two and a half positions were approved, we would be going from an actual four forty-three point nine in fiscal fifteen to four four five point one seven in sixteen, with a six increase in, approximately six increase in teachers and six reduction in support staff. That's, that's, that's how it works out.
We're just not equipped one, but.
Definitely not. But I mean, as far as FTE, that was the question, so.
Thank you, John.
So do we have, I can take a motion if you would? Do we have a motion to approve the staffing requests as recommended by administration?
So.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
So the motion is to approve it as recommended? Is that what the motion is? Well, it's, I find it, you know, counter to the trend has been talked about here, that I think, I think we're going to have to face the understanding of what's going on trend-wise, and what, what options we have to deal with that. Because I sense a movement at the state level to use these ratios as the next level of control that's going to be put upon districts. We're not there now. There's a lot of talk about it, it kind of faded near the end this time in the session, but I think it's out there with a lot of visibility. So, if we're going to approve this, I would like us to follow up with some action that says, okay, let's look at what options we have going forward. And if that comes down to, as Patrick mentioned, changing the course content and that kind of stuff, I think we need to understand that that's the possible consequence. I think we also need to have some insight into what's going on in the class, we've got very high visibility in what's going on in class sizes in the elementary school. I think that visibility vanishes when it gets, increasingly vanishes as it goes from middle school to high school. So I don't, you know, I think we need to have some understanding of what, what the implications of that are to the breadth of the offering and what, where that might go. I mean, I'm very sympathetic to the idea that we don't want this huge mismatch in the kindergarten. By the way, we have some pretty good mismatches between other grade levels between schools, too, if you look at that chart. So it isn't just unique to the Chamberlain, Chamberlain kindergarten, it occurs in other places. My, I'd like to see us have some action behind the scenes, doing some work, as to how we get there. I have a little trouble about asking for that because I know a whole lot's going on to try to cope with what's coming, okay? And I'm afraid that this hundred-student thing has got a surprise in it that, you know, may put this, may make this pale, okay? So, so having said that, I've said it.
Yeah, and I guess I would just comment that, yes, as far as if you look at elementary schools, middle school, and then high school, it's the elementary school that we're seeing the significant decrease in, in enrollment of forty, at least projected at this point. But the problem is, is it's balancing among the schools and.
In class distribution.
Yet another reason to either have one or, or two elementary schools. Because, yeah, the high school is going up, and, and the middle school's essentially the same. And I know at the middle, and I understand that what the middle school, what they're asking for is, is enrichment in the programming, which, and I think very important programming. So, it's kind of, it's, at, at face value, it seems counter to trends, but as you dig down, it's really hard for me to want to have kindergarten classes of around twenty, for instance. And that's kind of where we are. So that's.
And my own comments would be, I have no issues with the need identified at Chamberlain for the additional headcount. I have the concerns I've expressed about looking at balancing the whole district, and, and specifically looking at the two other schools, and maybe thinking creatively about how to balance or fund that headcount by doing something different at the two other schools, either in aggregate or specific to kindergarten. And on the other programs, Carson, you get a pass because there was a lot of discussion about kindergarten. We call, we call it the.
You just mentioned that to me on this.
Yeah, no, we call that.
We noticed.
The cloak of invisibility, we do see you there.
That's okay.
I guess, can, I mean, can we, we can go ahead and approve this and, you know, ask David as, for as long as he can hold off until he sees the dust settles, to see if there's some way to deal with the kindergarten issue, as opposed to taking that out of this motion, the kindergarten class teacher.
Well, I think that, I think the motion's been made, it would have to be amended to get David direction on timing. I think we've heard that timing is of the essence in terms of opening up.
Yeah, I prefer to give David, if we're going to approve it, we approve it as it is, let them go with it. And then if there's some news down the way that says, oops, we can make an adjustment, let's let the administration come back. And I think they're very responsible people come back with, you know, we can rebalance this a different way, and, and we'll, and we'll do that. That's where I'm at on that, I mean.
Okay. I won't seek to amend.
I just, having had to administer things like that, having a vague direction like that is really hard to do anything with, okay? It means you don't, it means you don't do anything for a while.
So we have a motion on the table to approve the staffing request as recommended by administration. That's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I am going to vote nay on that, but the motion passes by board majority. And it goes on the record. Thanks. All right, we'll move on.
You didn't keep us on.
We're on to agenda item nine, review new legislation and impact on South Burlington.
So one of the things that we, we also talked about, and John also has included some information in here around our legislative activity, so in your packet is the, what we typically call our budget worksheet. Particularly the change from budgeted to legislative, most recent activity around the Vermont residential tax rate is highlighted.
Thank you.
Thank you for, are the two changes. And so, number six, number six and number seven, I think, I mean, I'd like to just make sure you're aware of that, one. And number two, I'd also like to, at this point, also maybe just at least share and have a brief conversation about three sixty-one. And I did provide you with some information from, from Rebecca in your, in, in front of you as well, so.
So do we have on this six and seven, is, can you highlight what did change between voter-approved and the residential rate?
Yeah, so it's, it's, you see the, the residential tax rate of a dollar, and then approved by the legislature of ninety-nine.
Okay.
So that's the, the major piece. But I don't know, John, you care to highlight anything that stands out to you that you think?
Clearly the action of legislature to reduce that penny. And so, the tax increases just under one penny, the residential tax rate is one point six two oh two, and we had published it would be one point six three six five pending legislative action. So, it, it, for every hundred thousand dollars, it's an increase of ten dollars versus what we'd done at the election time of twenty-seven. So it's a, it's a good thing for residential taxpayers.
So the, so the monthly increase in taxes on an average home value of three hundred and thirty thousand in the approved budget was seven dollars and nineteen cents per month incremental?
That's right.
And now that goes to two dollars and sixty-nine cents?
That's right.
The voter-approved original monthly increase on an average condo of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars was four dollars and ninety cents per month, and that now goes to a dollar eighty-three.
That's right.
So, just looking at this data, I think this would be a good idea to maybe get this into a quick other paper.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Then you hear?
We don't often get to give good news of taxes going down.
We can, we can certainly do.
So why don't, why don't all take responsibility with David and maybe put it into a, a letter or just an update from the superintendent, something to that effect?
We know Corey will have that, of course, but we're going to highlight it even more.
Can I, can I say that over again, Corey?
You do.
It went down.
So the only other thing would be, and John, maybe you can just, you know, given where we are, we're looking at kind of the cap activity that's out there, what that, what that kind of translates for us around kind of preliminary budget planning, you know?
Right. If you, if you keep this chart seven in front of you, you see that the Act sixty-eight expenses draw from the state education fund was five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars this year, which was one point six seven. The legislation that passed indicates that our increase could be up to five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, which is one point six three percent. We are a higher-than-average spending school. The, the average increase is two percent, but there are many districts that can go up higher than that because they're low-average spending schools, and we're higher than that. So our, our limit is one point six three. I'll stop there, there's one other thing I want to bring up.
So, when you look at our increase in Act sixty-eight draw of five eighty-eight, three sixty-nine, that would be essentially about all we could do.
From, from that standpoint.
Right. Obviously, there's many other things that are moving there, but.
Yes.
The amount, if you were to.
There's one other thing, that's the excess spending limit allows us to exclude debt service. service from this number. So next year, our debt service, unless we do more bonding, is down considerably. It's about $300,000, but that could go against this excess spending limit as a help. So there are a couple, there are four or five exclusions that, they're pretty small for us, so I won't go into them, but the debt service is the biggest one. Yeah.
You can become silent when it's like really good, good news.
John, what's that saying along the way about debt?
Well, it's not held against you if you have a capital expenditure. The state does not provide aid, but in effect, they are allowing us to go to the state end fund for the money to pay for it, rather than double taxing our residents. That's what it's saying.
So does that motivate us to try to find more things to go into debt?
Well.
Well, we heard some things today that.
Well, give us a great opportunity.
Might allow that opportunity.
There are some short-term things, and one thing I'm mulling about in my mind is the turf field. How do we finance that? If it's, turf fields don't last 20 years. If we did a 10-year bond, it would be a small increment every year, but that would be excluded.
Right.
Something like that, yes.
So you are thinking about it.
And there's also capital reserve funds as well, not just debt, that if we set up a capital reserve fund, that would be excluded.
That's right.
If we started building up, if we knew in five years we were going to have.
Oh, I did not know those would be excluded.
Yeah.
That's good news.
Yeah, for the excess spending cap threshold thing.
Was there additional information on 361, David? You wanted to come?
No, that pretty much was it. I mean, I think there's a whole lot more, you know, from outreach and planning, like we already talked about with the islands, understanding the implications of our budget, which we touched on that a little bit. There's other pieces in here on enrollment trends that I think are going to be important to pay attention to, but I'll just leave it at that. You know, we need to do some more work around what it means.
I guess I would just flag one thing, just, it's not Act 361, but I think it's an important, an important law that was passed, and that is a universal children's savings program, which is going to provide seed money for newborns in Vermont. I know this is not directly related to us because it's for college, but, you know, it's important that it's not going to be a whole lot of money that will start in the seed fund, but it will establish an account that hopefully will encourage parents to put more money in. And by need, there may be a way to get more money into children in need to fund college. And I thought that was a pretty important thing that was enacted. But I would just reiterate that we should plan fairly soon to talk about the outreach that the board needs to do, but enough on that for now.
Can I just, one thing on the savings account piece? You remember, we went to VSAC administratively, I don't know, a couple, how many months ago? But one of the things when we met with them around getting out information about student assistance was absolutely about, why don't we have them come in and meet earlier with, like, our younger children, right, PTOs particularly? And so that's actually before Pat was on, but that's, I think, directly connected to how can we make sure that, you know, at the earliest possible time, they can begin to understand how important that is? And here's some anecdotal help around, because typically you don't start talking about that now until junior, you know, sophomore, junior year. And that, what we know is, people are not in a position to do a lot, to catch up, so.
Right.
Thank you for highlighting that.
Yeah, and one final thing, and Elizabeth probably knows even more about this, is that a health, a committee is looking into different healthcare options as well, including moving teachers to the Vermont Health Exchange and other options, and I'm sure VHI is going to be closely to that, so.
All right, why don't we move on to Agenda Item 10, which is executive limitations policy monitoring on 2.1, Treatment of Parents and Guardians?
So I made the, I took a shot at interpretation and changes. Me, too. I marked my book very good. Am I the only one who hasn't found it yet?
No, I haven't found it. Though I know I saw it, so.
Do you have an extra coffee, Meg? Elizabeth needs one, too. I somehow don't have it.
Is that extra?
I got one here for you.
Okay.
So highlighted in yellow were the suggested changes from the conversation of the previous meeting, although Detail Policy Number Two brought in my attempt to provide some additional or changed interpretation and evidence. Detail Policy Four brought in just some additional information that was highlighted on, under evidence. So most of the other highlighted changes were a result of the conversation, with the exception of Detail Policy Two.
So any additional comments, observations from the board on David's modification to interpretation and evidence?
My brain is slow to a crawl, so.
Give you a moment.
I guess I'm, on Detail Policy Number Two, and I think I'll have to think about this with a clearer mind sometime, but that I just don't know if, how the evidence that's being solicited pairs up with the ends policy or complying with the district policy limitations. Perhaps they do, but it's not obvious to me.
Yeah.
Other than that, I thought that all the other changes were fine.
So in my, in my more close review of this, one of the things that I feel is that Detail Policy Two actually is redundant. I think a lot of what we asked for in Policy One, eliciting information for which there is no need, actually covers the majority of what I'm trying to say in Detail Policy, or what's said in Detail Policy Two. Because we're asking about getting information that's appropriate, which I correlated, when I got thinking about this more, Detail Policy One says eliciting information for which there's no need. And I put illicit into both, thinking about obtaining, which is in Part Two, in Detail Two, getting input or obtaining necessary information. And I all kind of put that under eliciting. So that's not what's in front of me because that wasn't what was asked of me. But I feel like there's much of what is in Detail Policy One and in Evidence is, I think, satisfies Detail Two. So what really drove me to try to provide clarity was about soliciting appropriate input and/or obtaining necessary information was specific to what is being asked in Detail Policy Two. So input and getting input and/or obtaining, so how people fill out information for input and/or how we obtain feedback from them. So under Evidence, I recognize that those two sentences are somewhat redundant, but it's the needed information and also how we utilize information that's provided, are the two, what I was trying to do, which was.
Yeah, I think, well, if you go back to one and two, one was sort of a restriction around really privacy, not getting information which is not needed. And then the second one is not failing to get appropriate input. So I know when we originally talked about that, there was, that was a distinction, which was sort of protecting privacy, but only collecting information where it's relevant. And I think Martin's question is really, is how relevant is the collection of information to fulfilling ends versus?
I'm just saying, Martin, why can't, it's too bad we can't just say what you just said, because that's so much more easy for everybody to understand. Like, that verbiage is, do you know what I mean? This, that's exactly right.
It's on tape now.
But that's really tricky to kind of glean from this document, for me at least.
It's hard when the negative, and you said this before.
I guess I understand it, but do you know what I'm saying? I see what David's saying, too, because if you're just reading these as the layperson, it does kind of seem like they're saying similar things.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I'm just sort of thinking back to ancient history when these were originally developed.
Right, I guess you have that, yeah.
Which, yeah, so, well, we're, we typically don't get into policy changes at this point. We should make a note, based on your observation and maybe that brief discussion, that we look at one and two again for clarification's sake on the Detail Policy verbiage, but specific to the changes that David made. Let's start with the evidence on Detail Policy One. It looks like you added some information here.
Correct.
So is this evidence adequate? I need the form.
Yes.
Okay, so on Detail Policy One, I don't know that we were out of compliance on evidence, but we would be in compliance there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Adequate data and in compliance. So Detail Policy Two, with David's modification of interpretation and the evidence, does this, well, let's start with reasonable interpretation. Is this a reasonable interpretation?
Well, no. The reason is, is it's unreasonable for a different reason this time than it was last week. And that is that you're excluding from your interpretation the second component of what's in the policy, that you're supposed to be getting information necessary to fulfill the district ends policy. You've got that covered, but then you've read right out of the policy in your interpretation, the or comply with the district's policy limitations. If you see, now it's just really completely, I mean, that's what I focused on last week as well, and that's what we focused on, but I don't think it's legitimate.
So District Ends Policy, okay, but lacking clarity on District Policy Limitations.
Right, I don't think in the interpretation you can read out the after the or.
So we're going to say no on the interpretation and just suggest you call out the policy limitations?
Mm-hmm.
So evidence on Detail Policy Two, then?
Evidence is good.
No, I noted my objection to the evidence.
What, on this? What he's already, what he's added?
Yeah.
No, this is better.
Well, my problem was that this doesn't, it doesn't relate, when you were gone.
Oh, sorry.
It doesn't relate to.
District's ends.
District ends or policy limitations. It's just kind of this list without that connecting up in some manner.
So we would seek some clarity on evidence to support both policy limitations and ends policy.
Right.
All right, we'll move on to Detail Four.
You got it on three first, actually.
Three.
Oh, there were no changes on three.
No.
Well, but did we?
But we have to do the, aren't we doing the sheet?
No, because we're going to have to bring this back again.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So Detail Policy Four.
That looks good.
Okay. Evidence on Detail Policy Five was changed.
I thought that was, that was good.
That's fine.
I mean, six.
Oh, sorry, Detail Policy Six?
Yeah, I thought that was, that was good.
That looks okay?
Mm-hmm.
Detail Policy Seven, we have a modification on evidence.
Yeah.
Yep, that's good.
That was simple.
We also had some community feedback on this one that talked about the, and I don't actually see it here, it was, the process here was on potential criminal investigations. Do I have the right one?
Yeah, I think it's the possible illegal activity.
She was looking at the chart.
Where is that?
It's down at the bottom of the page, on page five.
Oh, got it.
And that may be some, we need, yeah, maybe there's, that's the type of request we put in there. I don't, we don't know until the, you know, we.
My sense of what I want to do, that doesn't sound like it's strong enough, it is a possibility, but it, you know, it's, I don't know what a better word is, but I think, that my sense is that's what the objection was, is the possible.
And for there have been a conclusion of possible, something needed to happen, whether it was some vandalism or something to that effect. So I mean, my guess is there was something more specific behind this. So if there's, if there's an opportunity to clarify that, David, versus what kinds of comes across as a little bit of more of a fishing expedition, I think that would be helpful.
Maybe to categorize that in a better way, somehow, right. Again, I'll do some work with the police department around that, too. Did you want to say something, John?
Well, yeah, I see the problem. It wasn't fishing, we had vandalism on one of our trucks. It's possible, you know, it's possible until they determine there was actually a crime there. So that's, it's semantics we need to get the word better, I think.
Well, I mean, there, yeah, I don't think, I don't think you should use possible.
Well, I think, I think the request is vandalism investigation.
Well, the reality is.
Would the word like apparent be a better word?
Well, I would say probable. I mean, it's probable, illegal activity, you know, that's.
Because you could have, like, damage to a car, but it was a result of somebody setting up for the play and turned and, you know, and accidentally punched in the panel, you know, but never knew it. So it's poss, you know, obviously seems like vandalism, but what was the word you said?
I would hope that the situation is that between you and the police chief or the police representative, that you're making some determination that this is not a trivial, not a trivial expedition, right? That it's, that there's some reasonableness to the request.
Could be reasonable suspicion of illegal activity, if you really want to get.
No, no, reasonable suspicion, no. It's too late. I was going to say reasonable suspicion of probable illegal.
Yeah, stop, yeah, it needs to fit on one.
I'll make you a jar of water.
Okay, so modifications on seven. How about on Detail Policy Eight, David had a modest change on interpretation and then some additional evidence?
It's good.
It's fine.
Okay, so it looks like we will put this on again for another reading with changes in Detail Policy Seven and Detail Policy Two.
But before we go there, I think the, I think there was another dimension to the public complaint, and that was about the storage time being.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, yeah.
I don't know where that is in here. I know we've been down that road many times about, and I'm personally comfortable with the way we've been handling it, but I just want to note that there was a public objection to the nonspecificity of the amount of storage time.
And I did, I did respond to the community members' feedback, just in terms of the discussion the board had relative to being specific in a public policy of matters that might impact security or safety of the facility, students and staff.
So I think we have the right, I think we're handling it right. I just wanted to note that there was an objection.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to setting the agenda for the June 17th, and I would highlight that there were sort of the two board members absent from that meeting, myself included.
So I think that we should load up on some additional monitoring reports. I'd say 2.10 and 2.9. Can we put in there?
No, no.
Any additions, deletions?
I have two. Action on. Action on lease rates for equipment.
Do we need to add that altogether new, John? You mean it's a new item?
It's definitely new, yeah.
Okay, so...
And action required.
So...
And it's, the lease, we get rates, and then in July, the actual document and the transaction will be approved, so it'll be two parts.
And equipment and covers, covers what, John?
Computers, our three buses, and the front end loader that we just...
So, it's the whole gamut of equipment?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the other item?
The second thing is to revisit the Orchard project. We had used some retirement funds to pay for that, and I have to recommend, based on our standing, whether we can reinstate some of those, repurpose the retirement funds back to where they were supposed to go, if we had other funds. It was, I remember when we did that, Martin came up with that solution, so last time due, it's at June 17th.
This is the Orchard drainage piece, remember?
I guess, since I'm not going to be here, but I'd throw this question out for you to consider in advance of that, of whether, given the cap for excess spending that we're going to have next year, whether that money would be better placed in contingency and then holdover funds for next year, or would it be the year after? Just, I throw that out for you guys to ponder.
To look at options.
And the first question is, I'm not 100% sure there will be enough to make the move, that's the first thing, and secondly, then we could consider that, sure.
Right.
Okay, looks like the agenda's finalized. Any comments on our Agenda Item Number 12, future Agenda items?
Elizabeth, one thing we didn't say to the board is about our visit to the Mount Mansfield Union District, but we both, Elizabeth and I, were asked to go to the Mount Mansfield Union Southern Bud District, because it's had some consolidated folks, and they asked us to, John Alberghini Miller asked if we would come, and we agreed, and they were, we probably were there for 40 minutes, 45 minutes or so, and we provided some basic information on policy governance. They were, I would say, in the very infancy of just thinking about it, but I found it to be kind of informative just to talk about it and to be asked questions, so I thought it was, I thought it was helpful, helpful conversation.
Yeah, and I, you know, I know we spent a lot of time on this, but I think it reinforced for me that the, as painful sometimes as policy governance and monitoring is, and we were very clear to say we operate under modified policy governance, it does provide structure that allows us to keep the work at the board level and distinguishes the work of the administration as well, so I'm sure there, you know, will always be room for improvement, but it did reinforce kind of what boards struggle with when they don't have that umbrella structure.
That's a lot of really good questions.
All right, we'll move on to consider the minutes of the May 20th meeting. Any changes or comments?
I don't know if on page three, is this what we usually do, because it seems like it should say, under staffing requests, at the June 3rd school board meeting, Ms. Young will present desired staffing changes. I don't know, it says I.
Instead of I, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's fine, we should change that.
So, with that modification, by consensus, those will be approved. Any comments on the May 26 meeting minutes?
Nope.
And by consensus, those are approved. We have consent agenda, we have a number of new hires. If you want to walk through those.
Yeah, and I did provide the new hire report, I don't know, it is in your packet, and so some of those are, you know, provide salary and then the budgeted salary, so I want to just highlight that for you. There's a fair amount of movement. I would say I've been successful in many areas, although when I get into specialty positions, it's been a little bit more challenging, and one that I would point out to you is the high school ITE person, which is obviously over budget, and that was, again, based on the pool of candidates and the needs at the high school, that was the candidate that was available, and that's Lauren Perrin.
And is the one underneath her, it says Orchard School, it also says Rick Marcott, so which school is she at?
Yeah, that should be noted if we're approving this consent agenda. I think it's Orchard School it's supposed to be, because she's replacing...
Yeah, it's Orchard, at Deirdre Fallon.
So, then the position at the bottom...
You see that? See where it listed?
Yeah.
But that just should be noted for...
Yeah, that's good. Yeah.
So, with that modification, do I have a, we'll take action on these, sorry. Make sure we put that. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as recommended by administration?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Dan, you didn't have a chance to get into the minutes for next meeting yet, so...
Any questions or comments on AP orders 43 and 44? 43 and 44, questions or comments?
Oh, Lord.
All right, we'll take a moment to fill out the board's self-evaluation.
Do we have things to sign?
Yes.
Hand them out.
Yeah. Do you want to use that?
We'll go down the line.
Uh, yes. So, this was, it should have been in your packet, but I...
Oh, this is just me.
Stuart, do you mind? You can pick up these names, and if you don't mind, just open up the...
For the board evaluation, we agree with everything except a couple no opinions on moving items off the parking lots.
Is that because you saw Diane here today, did you?
Yeah, exactly. For superintendent feedback, we had three disagrees as far as the data and reports being provided in advance. We have two disagrees for board questions being anticipated and responded in a thorough, timely manner, and two disagrees that the agenda was followed in adequate time allowed for board discussion with respect for the published schedule to the public, although a note that we are now five minutes before, you know, five minutes early. How's that?
Need a night owl.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I'm to go into executive session.
And to go into executive session?
So moved.